Eight eight, says code nine six three five nine three eight three six. Virtually via the link that is on the online agenda. It's really hard to spell out there. I need the board to approve and accept this agenda with amendment of the removal of item nine A. Board policy first and final reading for zero six point six zero COVID nineteen new policy. Need a motion and a second, please.
Motion.
Have a second? Jane, did you catch the second?
No.
Okay. Okay, um, do we have any questions on the amended agenda?
So the question, there was just new developments or regulations that just came out, what, today or last week? So we have to change it. Correct. Okay.
Yes.
So we'll just get something next week? Updated one?
Uh, we're waiting on the government.
As soon as the government gives us the guidelines, we will share them.
In the mail.
Okay.
Okay, all in favor of approving the amended agenda? Say yes.
I.
Yes.
And for the third, we have Erin Johnson, Jim Ford, Amy Tally Rani, Ryan Weldon, Katie Kleiss. Do we have Deshara on? I know she was trying to, as soon as she chimes in, I'll put her on the record. Okay. Now we'll do pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the public of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. No recognitions, we don't have any communication from the public right now. Consent agenda. I need the board to approve and accept the consent agenda items as recommended.
Motion.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor, yes?
Yes.
Opposed? All right, thank you. Sorry, did somebody? I was getting some static.
Lot of static, yeah.
Alrighty, we'll move to information only discussion twenty one twenty two open enrollment. What do we have for that?
Anything specific?
Oh, it was just in that. Okay.
I did not catch any of that.
Um, she was looking to see if there was anything in particular to discuss, but might just be a, was in the packet? That sound right? Bruce, you didn't have anything particular about this? There weren't any changes or?
No.
That's, we typically have that every, every.
Hello?
Lori, I don't have to hold the meeting up, so is it okay if I, I'm working on getting in now, but?
Yep, I'll, Deshara, I'll move the mic over so Jennifer can just catch what you say then. That sound okay?
Okay, I'm still working on getting in.
Okay. Yeah.
I'm not sure what this discussion might have been.
Okay.
Hey Lori, this is Lucy. I had talked to Chrissy a little bit about this, and it is just a yearly agenda item where the board considers any space that's available and whether or not to continue with open enrollment. Or just kind of the discussion regarding that, whether or not there's going to be space for open enrolled kids to come in to the district. And so I think it was just an agenda item for the board to discuss that, but I don't think there's any reasons for there to be a problem at this point.
So maybe, hey Bruce, could you tell us, what did we do last year on this item?
I think one of the things that I think one of the things that we did was we can take these as a case by case basis. And so until we brought on another elementary space has been pretty tight. Next year, we feel that crunch at the high school. I would recommend to the board no action is taken this evening. Until we see who shows up as far as the beginning of the year. And that unless Josie tells me differently, we're able to close open enrollment once at any point or any juncture. If we find that our kindergarten class comes in stronger than we might anticipate. This COVID virus is adding a new twist, for example, in that we've had our kindergarten roundup, but we've also, there's a point where a lot of parents sometimes decide to, I call it red shirt. But other people decide to hang on to their child one more year. And so I think the high schools will be very full to the point of making a recommendation, I think we want to see exactly if they're both full or if we would want to close one versus the other. And so I think data needs to drive this decision. I don't think you have the data tonight as a board of directors. And so the superintendent would make a recommendation to, for you to wait for that data and act accordingly.
And if, if I'm correct, current board policy is open enrollment goes to the South feeder.
Current enrollment.
Open enrollment goes to the South feeder.
Has always gone to the South feeder unless we don't offer a program and
Okay.
And that would be more like in a special education setting.
Sure. So unless board policy would need to change, that would come from you guys.
It would, it would have to come from administration and it would be an exception that I have not seen more than maybe a one or two times. And I would have to ask Darren or Matt how many times they've granted that exception, but very, very few.
Okay.
And the only reason we go south is because the enrollment's a little bit lower at Ankeny High School, correct?
It currently is a little bit lower, and I would say that we're starting, Jim, to, I think that was Jim.
Yeah.
All right, I'll name.
I, I, there are so many faces on my screen, I'm just going by voice recognition. Jim, the we're starting to see more of a, of a spread between north and south. Just because they have the capacity to have more homes. Whereas the south, even though that they're, they continue to build, they, they're, they're pretty close now, but I would say as you look down the road, that will not continue for years to come.
Okay, thanks.
Did any other board members have a question about the open enrollment? No, okay, thank you guys. Old business, we have contracts and agreements, we have three A plus water care and foundation renewal for Centennial twenty twenty, EAB global renewal district leadership forum, and the leader in me renewal agreement. I need recommendation, approve the contracts and agreements as presented. Do I have a motion in a second?
Second.
Okay, thank you, any questions?
I just have a question about the EAB global, is that something, is that new this year? I, I was just not aware of that group or what they were doing for us.
Yes, they're doing research and some modeling for us that we have used them before. Next year will be our last year on the contract. And so we're able to use their databases and also try to go out and find things that academically people are doing in certain situations such as COVID virus. And find out what and how certain states are handling things. It's interesting because as I've looked, I've found that many of the schools are reacting, that they're reacting as a result of what's being placed on them by the state. And the state education and their state Iowa Department of Public Health. And so even though that you would imagine that one is like the other, there are a number of schools that, for example, in Arizona, they've been closed for some time now for the rest of the year. We have some states that are planning a return such as Iowa. Until we hear differently, we are planning to go back in May. But as you know, from the governor's conference last week, that too can change. So EAB is a, is a very good source for us that to reach out beyond Iowa and to see what other states do. We used to use Hanover and, and they're as good as well.
Sure, so how long have we worked with this group? I just hadn't heard of them.
Three years, Jim.
Okay, all right, and you've been happy with them, obviously.
Happy with them as well as Hanover.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, all in favor of approving the contracts and agreements as presented?
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, opposed? All right, thank you. Thanks, everybody, yes, it's just easier to hear over the lines than other forms of affirmation. All right, that was our only old business. We have no new business on the amended agenda. We're going to go to board member reports. I'll start at the other end of the table tonight. Deshara, do you have anything to share?
No, I don't.
Okay, Jim?
I just was, if Bruce could give us an update on where we are with just the process and getting things up and running as far as starting next Monday and where we were as far as what is it required versus option or voluntary? I can't remember what they called it, and just what we're doing as a, as a district and how we're guiding our principals and teachers to connect them with our families. So just wanting an update since we talked about that on Thursday.
Hey Jim, how about, how about I hold that until Bruce does his?
Oh yeah, that's probably, probably gonna talk about that, sorry.
Okay, Erin, did you have anything to report?
Two quick things, because I was gonna mention, we probably should put it as an agenda item as a COVID nineteen update, just so that it's formally on the agenda. But I'll repeat maybe what I said Thursday about, I, I was looking over the website over the weekend and some today, and I think we've done a tremendous amount of getting a lot of details out there. And I'm encouraged to see the, the level of detail that's making it. But I think there's one piece that I'd like to see that I think is missing, because I fielded another call today from a parent that wasn't quite, you know, sure exactly what's going on and maybe necessarily how to navigate the complexities of the, the things that we're dealing with. And that's just a simple FAQ, you know, why are we doing what we're doing? Why haven't we seen this? You know, what are the timelines? And just some of those things that might help us and the parent walk through, you know, what they're not seeing. They're still struggling with what seems like a, a, a common, you know, response, but don't understand necessarily all the subtleties and the, and the, and the legal and the, the logistical things that we're trying to work through in order to provide that. So if we, if we had some way in an easy format to just spell that out, I think that would help a lot. Because every time I tell them, oh, we're dealing with this, 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 oh, okay, that makes sense. And just trying to help piece that together in one document, I think would help. And that can be something running as we're moving along. Kind of like the dated updates that I see, that might be another document that we could help just continue to answer questions as people have them. So just a thought.
Great suggestion.
Thanks, Erin. Katie, did you have anything?
I do not.
Okay, Amy?
Um, just, I went out again today in my dinosaur costume to the Southeast food site. And I just want to give a shout out to my daughter Erica, who's been going to every one of them with me and holding a sign, and she's been, been with me all the way. So it's been a lot of fun. I think a few kids like it, so.
Were there lots of cars like?
Yes. Lots of cars, they ran out at Southeast and they gave out four hundred and fifty.
That is fantastic. Awesome, thank. Okay, Ryan?
Nothing to report.
Okay. I don't have anything myself, other than just a big thanks to everyone who is working and teaching and connecting with their students, especially the teachers. My inbox is overflowing with my four kids, but just to continue, shout out to everyone who's, you know, the nutrition services people and the custodians and just everyone who is doing so much extra, even though it doesn't seem like extra to the people doing it. I just couldn't be more impressed with everything that's going on. And so just so much of that. Bruce, I'll let you share all of your knowledge with us.
So this will be short then. Congratulations to the dinosaur. I don't know what the temperature will be Wednesday. I think that it's going to be warmer. And so your dedication is, is well appreciated. And and to Director Weldon, your house looks extremely calm for the number of children you have, so I wonder where, where they are.
Are they locked?
Basement.
Okay.
I need your, I need your basement.
They're in some shelter. I would say to Mr. Ford that the parents and teachers and staff will be receiving all letters of different forms. But basically, we along with, I believe, every district except walk is on a block schedule. And so for those of you who don't know what block scheduling is, their year is completed in a half a year. And so they take only four classes a day. And so they don't have a lot of choice in what they get to choose from which they get to choose. And so when we talk about government, when we talk about other subjects that they have to pass, some of their students haven't even started government because their second semester hasn't even started in the second half. And so I called their superintendent, a former colleague of mine, and I said, I have figured out about eighteen different ways to do this. What do you know that I don't know? And he said, basically nothing, other than we're still on block. And I said, well, I thought you had left block. He said, no, we're still on it. And so and then two years, they have two high schools still on it. So they, I believe, along with mine, although I, I haven't had that confirmed, I haven't talked to Tom, maybe on some type of required the schedule, we at least plan to start on the voluntary. I think some of you spoke very eloquently about why we would do that. And then the other point that and brought up is that when we get to the next part, we will either on April sixteenth, find out whether we're closed the rest of the year, or we're going to open up. Now, I've had a number of parents indicate to me that even if you open up, their children are going to return. And I've had a lot of other opinions expressed to me, so I'm waiting for the governor and the Iowa Department of Health to make that call. And so straightforward, we're starting off with what we're doing now. We hope to bring the rigor that Director Johnson spoke about. And and as well as Director Walden. And then we also have not ruled out, because you can do it by grade. And we'll have to decide at that point what we're going to do as far as will we finish out the year in voluntary K twelve? Or will we switch at the high school level because we need some grades? And that would really be the reason we would need to do that. That would open up
I'm sorry.
special ed and faith. And we would need to address those issues as well. The other issue that we have is the accessibility of the number of computers that we do not have, would not have available. We would try to have a workaround. And we've talked about what that workaround would be. We also have talked about, well, once we got them the computer, what about the service providers? And there are a number of cable and phone companies that are stepping up. How fast, I don't know, I don't run those companies. But there are literally cities that have this building place, which would be great. But ideally in our reality in Ankeny, and we don't have that, so. And the last thing I would say is our next meeting will focus because plan, the first plan allowed you to allow me to start to pay our employees that are not working right now. But we have been, some have been. It's really only the associates that have not been working on a daily basis. We have people, obviously cooks that are working and custodians that are working. And, and so I would say that I will be coming back to you with a recommendation of what I would ask you to do, which isn't a secret. And I would ask that you continue to pay these employees through the end of May, or excuse me, at the end of April, since that's the end of the date for this, this next phase. And state legislature through SSA have paid us essentially through state supplemental aid for these people, even though it's in a year behind. We have been funded for all of this being figured in. And so I think that our legislature would hope that we would continue to work to do everything we can to continue to pay our, our classified staff or hourly staff. Once we get past May, or excuse me, April, then we will hit phase three. And phase three will be, I think, to the end of the year. And I, I don't see them breaking it up anymore, but I thought maybe they would take this to the end of the year on this phase, and I was wrong again. And so I'd be happy to answer any questions, any other one.
I'm, I'm still trying to figure out what's it, what's it gonna look like for families and teachers and, you know, grade levels, subjects, elementary, middle, high school, just what's the delivery gonna look like for all those varied people? And, and the expectations for teachers and students? I know we're being involuntarily right now, but it could change for some secondary people. But I'm just trying to figure out, people are asking me what's it gonna look like? And I, I can't really tell them, because I don't really understand that.
Well, Jim, I think it's going to look very similar with the exception as we become more versed with online education. You may see more presentations done, done through the web. But we still face that equity issue that not everybody would have access to that. So we would need to print and do some other things to make sure that everybody would have that.
What's our, like, we have a technology department, and I know there's not a ton of people there. Are they able to help some of the teachers or whoever that maybe just need a little assistance in that area to deliver their lessons?
We do, and we have coaches that are also able to do the same thing. It's basically what we're doing is trying to figure out the what.
Sure.
What we're teaching. And then really, why would you want to do this on the web? the web? Is it for engagement? Is it just because we have computers, we should use them? Which brings us to the the why, which is the compelling reason of why do it online? And we do not claim to be an online school. And I think this, some of these questions will be answered tomorrow and the next day.
Sure.
And but it's really in the individual teacher's hands as far as what they're doing and what they're expecting. Remember, it's still voluntary. And they still need to be taking care of themselves. And they still need to balance of taking care of themselves as well as knowing that having that have jobs and and lots of other things to deal with. This is it's not this is not meant to if if kids need help, I appreciate that parents are they're able to help, but not all students have that and not all not all subjects are that easy anymore to help as they move into the upper grades. And so that's why we have school.
So the voluntary part is for the kids and the families, but the teachers, they have to do this, correct?
Yes.
Yes.
Students have expectations. Twice a day.
Okay.
We are to answer questions. The principal is communicating with teachers. And it's their responsibility as building principals to make sure that if there's a problem that the the they would try, a parent would try to talk to a teacher first, but if they couldn't get a hold of a teacher, just like when we're in school, and they would talk to the principal.
Sure. So like, do the PLCs like talk? So let's just say there's a particular PLC, and they all kind of coordinate, so they're all delivering the same things? Or something close? Is that part of the deal?
PLCs are not mandatory at this point for the next two days, three days, whatever. But I do know that PLCs are self-evolving and that they're getting together. Not together. Repeat, not together.
Right.
But they're sharing ideas and they're also we miss each other. And they I think they leave sometime be reacquainting. And then talk about what we do for the next week, yeah, what we do if we go back.
A lot of feedback right now. I think somebody just, DeShara, you were asking what a PLC is?
Yeah.
A PLC is a professional learning community. And so even back many moons when I taught, it was all of the people who either taught the same kids or taught the same subject. And we essentially learned together. Or we shared the same kids and we talked about kids who needed extra help. And so we tagged team on those students who needed help at the middle school level. Whereas in high school, it was more subject specific. And so we shared ideas about how we taught certain. And so it, when I first started to share, it was very lonely. And they handed you a book and they said, we'll see you at your event. Nowadays, there are people that you can turn to and ask for help. You still are responsible for a hundred you know, fifty kids or maybe even more, but you still you have people in which to turn to that have years of experience and say, I've been through that and I can loan you or I can show you or yeah, I'm pretty good at teaching poetry or I'm I'm, you know, when it comes to teaching a certain part of algebra, they might share ideas. And so it's what companies do. Teams of people who get together, they learn together. And at the end, they share data. And if it's done right, they see who made the most progress. And they say, what did you do that I didn't? Because your kids made so much progress.
Okay, thank you.
So if I understand, I mean, distance learning is happening at building level just like it would in person. So you may have differences in how that distance learning is happening from building to building at an elementary, middle, high school level. But just like everything else, the core curriculum is the same. So we might be getting questions from parents that say, well, my friend's kid at this school, their teacher's checking in five times a day, but mine's only doing it once. It doesn't mean one is wrong and one is right. It's just a difference between individual teaching styles and technology comfort and.
I know that in speaking with a very veteran teacher, they got together as AP teachers and concurrent teachers and made a schedule so that not all the AP teachers, in fact, they set hours just for their AP classes. So that not all the AP teachers would be teaching at the same time. Because some, a lot of Ankeny kids take more than one AP class. And so this way, it wouldn't be like they feel like the teachers are ganging up on them and everybody has it at eight AM. And so the teachers are thinking of the kids and they are doing some co-planning together, whether it be AP or concurrent who are trying to get college credit. And which Ankeny has a very stellar reputation.
So for parents who contact us as board members, we should feel just as comfortable telling them now as we would two months ago. If you have a question, start with your teacher.
We start with the teacher and they're to check their email twice a day. And if they don't hear from their teacher, then and that's an expectation. It was articulated some time ago. And that the and it and it should relate to the class, not are we going to, you know, if we're going back to school or, you know, beyond their scope of knowledge.
Right.
And then if you don't hear, then you would seek help from one of the principals, whether it be the head principal or one of the assistant principals. Because they too are working every day and are on contract.
What about?
Working and the principals are working and they're on contract.
What about like art, PE, music, guidance? What are those personnel doing during this? Because obviously, I'm thinking elementary, but really, all all content area or all levels, they're a little different as far as at least in elementary, it's not like I'm just wondering what they're doing.
Are you concerned they're not doing enough?
I don't know what they're doing. I just was curious what they, if they're if they're connecting with the kids or how would they do that? Because they'd like have six hundred kids or seven hundred kids and how how they're delivering. I have no idea. I'm just curious. I I don't have a clue.
Well, I know one thing, Jim, is we opened the buildings because some of the kids forgot their instrument.
Sure.
And so we want to make sure they're practicing. And so they got the opportunity to get their instrument as well as some of the other things they forgot. It wasn't spring clean out. So that hasn't occurred. And if you're a parent, don't worry, that day will come. But the thing that I would say is that the guidance counselors are working on the types of things and the effects that this may be having on some students
Yep.
are on the list. The social workers tend to be more focused on the family dynamics. And one of the things that, you know, we were checking on, do do, for example, some of our trailer parks, some of the internet and some of the delivery models do we're checking to see if they deliver that's are they able to carry in that online learning? So they're working on some of that. But I would say that I can't really speak specifically what what a vocal teacher or what a band teacher is. I will definitely look that up or find out for you. And find out for the board.
I would imagine that those building administrators are keeping track of their staff and that's their primary role.
Yeah, I mean.
There's a certain level online for specials. If you go to the pre-K twelve, whatever, there's some level. Again, I don't know to the robustness of it, but there's there's definitely some efforts to 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 provide some guidance there.
I'm just thinking.
From all of their specials teachers as well.
I just don't have any idea since I'm not really in that loop. But, you know, being that we're all stuck at home, a lot of people are out and getting lots of physical activity. So it'd be kind of neat just to hear if there's some sort of feedback on suggestions to help kids stay active. I don't know.
Yep.
I know my wife was expected to do X number of lessons as a music teacher of thirty-three years. So whenever I hear the piano and singing, I know it's not her entertaining the bulldog, but it's she's making a video or doing something like that. So.
Okay, um, do you plan on having a update or a board meeting before the next scheduled board meeting? Or is the next scheduled board meeting will happen after sixteen? Okay. Okay. So so a week from today, there's another special board meeting. Can we add an agenda item to that meeting?
We plan to do that so we can bring you.
So you can bring us updates on all of this information?
First thing, we're going to bring you the next thing, like, hey.
The phase two with.
And learning.
Okay.
Now, the learning, I've already basically told you which one we're going to start with. That doesn't mean that we'll stay with it the whole time. But at this point, we would plan to start with voluntary. And people, quite frankly, have asked, you know, why aren't you using all these computers that you have and teaching day to day? And as most superintendents in the metro have indicated that it took Des Moines, I believe, over two, right at two years to develop a curriculum, develop get the hardware and get the services and to expect us to to spin on, you know, a month or whatever, to be able to do that is not reasonable and especially at the lower level would be very difficult.
Okay. All right. Did you have anything else as part of your report that?
I do not. I appreciate the board having willingness to keep continuing to call in. It seems like you didn't have a lot and now you have four meetings in a row. So thank you. And any, anything that questions you have, please get to Lori and we'll try to get them answered.
Go ahead, Brian.
Go ahead, Kim.
Did I? I actually have a question or just something I'd like them to to look at or think about, or if there's ways to do this. But are we looking at creative ways or things we can do to utilize our associates? They are a depth of knowledge and expertise and can really relate to some of these students. And so are there ways we can utilize them through this? And I don't want this to come across like I I expect them to work to get paid because I'm not in that camp, but let's utilize them if we can. If there's any ways to do that.
I'm reading across the room correctly from Darren. He's telling us that that is going to be addressed at next Monday's meeting. Is that correct? We will have many, many more details a week from today. But I am getting, I am getting a thumbs up on that.
Thank you.
From many, from many more than six feet away. Yes, DeShara?
So do. And I missed Thursday. I don't know if it's been talked about, but will we discuss if we have an especially group and those who have IEP and how all this will work for them?
Will that be at Monday's meeting as well?
It'll be a Monday's meeting as well. Currently, under the voluntary method, APE is not required to be addressed, which we have approximately eleven hundred cases that if we go required would would be required to all be open and all have meetings. And so and it's not like we're still having to have those meetings because we're having to have teachers, which, again, they're under contract. So they're having to participate and get on Zoom or medium to to get in and talk about students with needs, special needs. And so those meetings continue under the direction of Nancy Lehman. And and I would assume not far off in the distance is will be five oh And I would assume not far off in the distance is, will be five oh four if we ever go back. Which. We'll go back to school, it's just what will the date be? And so the answer is yes.
Okay, I should have, I should have mentioned this during, during the board member report, but I had a parent call me, she said that her and her. Husband are both essential workers, they have three kids in the district and two are special needs. So she was concerned about the online learning. What is that going to look like for their family because they have two children who aren't able to. Self-direct and to do that on their own, and so I didn't know, you know, where we are with that. So that's why I asked.
I would have her call me. And let her know, have her use your name, so I know who, so I can make a connection. Simply because of that. And I will try to direct her to, through the right channels as far as. Providing the help that they need and every family that has children that are entitled. Need something different. And even those that aren't entitled, my two kids are very different. And so. It's, it's one of those things that. Have, have me a call and we'll get something worked out.
Can those parents as well contact their children's primary? Teachers, whether they're elementary or high school or middle school?
They are able to contact their, their. They can contact their teachers if they're having issues, if they need advice, if they. I mean, they're, they've been their teachers for. August through March, so three quarters of the year. Been the teacher and they might be able to give them some suggestions. And, you know, we have very good conferences. It kind of falls off at the secondary. And I'm what was one of those parents because I saw the grades, so I didn't need to see anymore.
So, so parents of kids with IEPs and all that stuff?
Any parent.
Any parent.
Any parent. They can feel free to. To ask a question of the, of the teacher. What, what won't change though is if they, if they start suggesting, well, can you give more? Online or required?
Right.
Because that's against the law.
Right.
I mean, they can do more online.
Sure.
It's not required.
At this point. All right.
I have one more question.
Okay, Ryan. We just, we just have to be a little, a little careful about straying from an item that was on our agenda, discuss this too much, right? No, but. The high sign that we're, we don't want to stray from adding an item to the agenda at the last minute.
And I mean, definitely related to your report, Bruce, the, just, you know, as we are looking at optional versus required. I'm just curious, you know, if we look two, three years down the road at, you know, our sophomores and juniors that are going to be going into college, do you see? The higher level learning institutions placing any emphasis on the kids that were able to. Participate in required learning at the end of this versus a school district that only took the optional route?
I think schools are going to have to change, quite frankly, after this. And I'm reading a lot of stuff about how admissions departments are dealing with it now. And. I mean, there are kids that basically got in after their junior year. And their senior year just wasn't. They were staying their senior year so that they could. Be in high school, really. For academics, probably not for maybe activities, athletics, maybe emotional maturing. Or the maturation process. I, I have said this from day one of my becoming superintendent. The senior year would change, it already is. I, I believe high school will change now. Within the next ten years. This, this may be what schools need to. And maybe not change, but need a choice of go to a, a very traditional school. Or to go to a school that is built on choice and built on. The application of theory. So I always use harvest as an example, just because it's close and I can use it and know it. You're going to see schools that have been running for at least five years, ten years. That are out there providing that and they're saying. Kids need this, they don't need this, and they're requiring. The, the thing that I would caution people is. I want kids to take as much of school as they can so that they can have as much choices they can. If you don't, if you cut yourself off in any of the core subjects, you're taking away something. Now, should everybody take physics? Probably not. But if you do, that's part of, of world that is open to you as far as. World of work. And so. I just think that. Will, will change and I think this, I think this thing right here that we're facing where. Hundreds and thousands of people are dying in the world. And up to two hundred and forty thousand people in Iowa will die from, according to what I heard today. I think this is enough, whether you live in Ankeny, Iowa with almost seventy thousand people. Or if you live in a smaller town with seventy people. I think this is the thing that will bring people closer together about the delivery of education. And maybe open some people's eyes to what is the United States about and what direction should we be heading? Great question.
I guess all of us who have sophomores, right, going to be sophomores, and right now, we'll find out in about four years, Ryan. What our kids do to get in college.
And he has a little longer to wait.
Sit back and see some perspective. Well, on that note, I need a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Yes.
Opposed? Okay. Before I gavel, remember, a week from tonight, we're going to have a special meeting again. And there will be a new link, if I am correct, to the new WebEx meeting in that agenda. Okay, if everyone doesn't get it, let me know, board member wise. Okay, thanks, everybody.